Thank you. I feel like Judge Judy. First item of business on the agenda this evening's approval of minutes. If not, I'll adjourn motion to approve minutes. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The events are approved. We have two items of business this evening on the agenda. First one is the O'Reilly's Auto Parts Store Site Plan Approval. Kathy, do you want to get some background on that?
We're like all professional in microplanning here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's nice to see your lovely faces this evening. Before you have plans for a brand-new O'Reilly's Auto Parts Store. It's approximately 7,000 square feet located at 1607 North Lincoln Street, or as we all know, the old Honda shop, or the Rainbow Brook store. And their site plan is then be told a brand-new building. They have adequate parking. Also, they'll be doing some retention work in the back because currently there is a drainage pipe that runs through the existing building, so we have to accommodate the existing onsite drainage, whatever's coming off the properties to the north. So they are rerouting the drainage to the west around the building, and Mr. Murray can explain that a little later if you have any questions. Everything seems to be in order. Scott, did you have any questions on this?
No.
There was a few minor details that needed to be changed, but those were taken care of. Like I said, they were very minor, like curb and gutter, along with a couple parking details. Overall, it was a good plan. And we have a gentleman here representing O'Reilly's for any further questions.
Thanks, Kathy. Who's here from O'Reilly's? Would you like to speak here?
Good evening. My name is Michael Jenkinson. I'm with Dreschen Spiffen Partners, doing engineering plans for the company who are building the O'Reilly's in Greensburg. As Kathy said, we submitted a set of plans. She reviewed it, had a technical meeting. We've addressed her concerns and engineers' concerns, warrants or concerns, and resubmitted, and have her favorable recommendation at this point. Do you have any questions or to me as a...
Anyone on board, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to add that I guess there was some miscommunication when O'Reilly's still spoke with the city back in May. They indicated their signage. However, they are asking for a waiver on their signage. It is a pole sign. It meets the current standards. And with setback in size, they're also asking for a wall sign, which also meets the current standards. However, they just wanted to be on record, more or less, because of the city trying to implement a new sign ordinance, which should be passed hopefully sometime next year, beginning of next year, first part of next year, let's say. But just in case when they got ready to build, if the new sign ordinance was in place, because they were approved under the old ordinance, they didn't have any problems. Don't worry about that.
So we're being asked you tonight's approval of the site plan for O'Reilly's. Site approval is not...
Exactly, yes.
Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll adjourn motion to approve the site plan after then with the signed draft. Well, it's not really correct. It's actually all... I stand corrected. So I'll adjourn motion before the site plan approval.
So do you.
You have a motion in thirty seconds. Thank you. I'll go home.
Bruce?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. The site plan's approved. Good luck. Next item of business on the agenda is the sign ordinance draft. We discussed this in the last meeting. Kathy, any comments on that?
Did everyone bring their copies with them? I have a spare. Take care of it. Last month, we spoke on how we were asked to form a committee. The committee is this BCA member, the Plan Commission member, myself, and the city engineer. We looked over several communities' ordinances. We took time. We had several meetings. I have the book, the book BCA on the chair there, is all the ordinances we went through and looked at. It was a learning experience. We feel the draft before you is very... Where am I trying to think of? Easy to read. It includes more definitions. It spells things out. The sizes have not changed. The only thing that has changed is the type of signs. We believe that with Lincoln Street being brought up to more current standards, and now we have a nice-looking, beautiful avenue, we'd like signage to blend in with that beautification also. Down the road, we have another road that's being reconstructed in Van Dalia Road. There are a few businesses out that route. Someday, if they would like to have a destination sign or something, you know, we really wanted to beautify and enhance that neighborhood because we do have residential areas around that. We're just trying to make Greensburg a beautiful city with the signage. We're not trying to outlaw it. We're not trying to outlaw any existing signs that people have. We're just trying to, more or less, beautify, and any new business that would come in, we're not to abide by the new ordinance. Any existing business would be grandfathered. So this is just a draft. Nothing has been approved by anyone yet. We're looking for any input from the Plan Commission. I know we have several audience members, so, you know, this hopefully will answer some questions. So I hope that if you have had time to look at it and you have any suggestions that you would bring us forward tonight, and, you know, we'll take a look at that and tweak it, whatever we need to tweak it, so we can get this thing passed. Because down the road, we'd like to, as we said, we'd like to update our land usage and try to make it a unified development, and hopefully this sign ordinance will fit into that unified development ordinance. So that was our goal, and Roy was on the committee, so I'll let Roy answer any of your questions if we have.
Okay, thanks, Kathy. One certification. Are we going to try to make a recommendation, City Council, City Mayor?
If he feels so, but that's not really, you know, it's up to you.
Can I reiterate something, Herb?
Yeah, Gary, go ahead.
Kathy said new business, new business wouldn't even follow this ordinance. That would only be a brand-new business that was built from the ground up. If you went into an existing location and there was an existing sign there, you need to change that sign face out. And even your business, you can still use what's there.
Okay.
So it's really somebody that's going to come brand-new and start new construction.
So it bothered the store, Kathy?
Right. As long as that sign base is still there, it's still good enough.
Before I entertain any comments, would you want to interject anything you want to say?
I just want it understood that it doesn't, if anything happens to, it doesn't affect people that have signs that are out there all day. Anything should happen to your sign, you're not going to have to follow this. You just put your sign back up. We have a tornado again, your sign blows down, you put up the sign you had. This only affects brand-new businesses going into a brand-new building that they're constructing. Any of you out there that have existing buildings or signs, you're not going to be affected by this. You're in compliance now, you'll be in compliance in the future.
Okay, thank you, boys. Anyone from the audience have any comments? He up, man?
Will you come up here?
He up, please.
Because I'm so quiet.
And if you could just go down by yourself.
My name is Sarah Namias, and I am here on behalf of my husband, who has a business on Lincoln Street. I have a couple of questions. First of all, I am not familiar, I'm sorry to say, with all of the members of the commission, but I would like to know which of you currently earn a living from a business that depends on a sign? Any of you? Kevin does or no? Any of the rest of you?
I have.
No, I mean currently. Okay, and I also would pose that question to you, Kathy, and to the committee that you worked with in your research. Any of you earn a living from a business that depends on a sign?
No, of course, the city has a welcome sign, so we hope they find it.
But your income is not generated by attracting customers?
By attracting customers, you know, from the city.
Indirectly, so. Okay, fair enough. The reason why I ask that question is, being a business owner on Lincoln Street, which from my understanding is at least a predominant part of the motivation for this change, is perhaps why business owners were not included in this discussion, because I think we have a unique perspective on the importance of signage. So I'd like the committee and the board here to address my question of an ordinance, which at least from my amateurish perspective, seems to favor big-box corporate type of entities and seems to really step on the good-old ma and pa businesses, which I thought found favor in this community over time. The second part of my question is a very direct question, because we are kind of in-between. We lost our sign when the city bought our front-age property, and that poor old soul of a sign needed to be put to rest, of course, and we have been... Four months? Five months? Five months working on a new sign design, which is almost ready to bring forth for approval. Not a small chore, not an inexpensive endeavor, and one of the most profound things in consideration of our old-aged and retired sign was that when people parked in our parking lot, our old sign was obtruded. So we lost the effectiveness of that signage. So the sign that we have been diligently working on and designing and refining and researching was intended to be taller, which from my understanding would then not meet this new standard, so it's pretty scary as a business owner at this point in time. So what happens to those of us who are kind of caught in the middle? You know, by definition, we are a business that already existed, but by the letter of truth, we really don't have a sign right now, other than a little temporary placard that blows all over Lincoln when these big storms come through. So if you could address how you will handle that, or if you've considered that and that sort of thing, please.
So your question is whether you could replace your sign with a different sign currently?
Exactly. I mean, we have worked very hard on a new design that would be a different format, would not certainly be anywhere near the size of anything else north of us on Lincoln that are on great big poles and that sort of thing, but it certainly would be taller than what we had in order to take care of that issue of being able to be visible and not obtruded by a parked vehicle. So...
We didn't need the requirements of our current sign ordinance.
It would be about fourteen foot tall.
With the base in the sign, it's probably thirteen to fourteen feet. And all of that was taken into consideration with, you know, safe visibility at certain driving speeds and distances. All that stuff had been researched. And I, you know, I'm just asking, you know, because this is a little scary that it will have all been in vain, because we have an entire relandscaping plan that all goes with it and so on and so forth, to the tune of many thousands of dollars, so. And just in case you wonder, yes, a dental business, a healthcare business does depend on signage. There's a reason we're on Lincoln Street.
I was going to ask you that question. Has anybody come in and said, "You know why I'm here because of that sign"?
Absolutely true.
Really?
Absolutely true. And when Lincoln Street project, as Ken Dorning could verify, because I might have chewed on his ear a few times, there is a perception that we only conduct business by appointment, and I'll guarantee you, people are reminded to pay their bills, thank you, and to make appointments when they go by and see that sign. New people that come in that community, that's one of their first introductions to who might be available, and I would tell you, with our colleagues in healthcare business, they would concur. So, thanks.
Okay, well, thank you. And answered question, I think, of taking the case, like in places.
I mean, right now, if it meets the current ordinance, then it would be fine. It would be used under the current ordinance.
The thing to remember, it's very important to remember, is there's always the possibility of going to the BCA and asking for a variance.
Then why do you have a warrant?
It's not a big deal. Go and you ask for it. That's if it changes. Right now, you have no problem.
Yes, you have.
Your sign is...
I do. I do have a sign. I'm going to have a little size issue.
I haven't seen your sign designed.
No, no, because we're finishing it, but knowing that it's about to, you know, that we're kind of caught in this timeline in-between is the concern.
As long as it meets the current standards.
I can't even read your ordinance right now. That's why I've been requesting a change for two years, but now it's radically crazy. Any other...
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is John Spence. I operate a chain of fitness centers, one called Anytime Fitness for Lincoln, also owner of residence here in Greensburg. When I came to Greensburg, one of the reasons I came here, we operate ten different locations. One of the reasons we chose Greensburg, things like Greensburg, because they are business-friendly, in my opinions. When we get into this kind of restrictive sign policy, sign regulations, it becomes less business-friendly. And I can give you an example, it's a practical matter. Right now, I'm weighing out three or four different locations for our next location. Sign criteria, the sign regulation in these communities is a big part of what we do. You know, I operate ten different fitness centers and restaurants in all kinds of different communities, and I can tell you, we track this on a regular basis. We spend thousands and thousands of dollars on advertising. The number-one place and our one source for our customers is our signage. Seventy percent is the fact that we have over and over, every time somebody comes into our restaurant, every time some new member signs at our club, we source that, we source the marketing. How did you hear about us? The sign, seventy percent. Change in this just becomes way less business-friendly. I just wanted to voice my opinion about that. If I were looking at two different communities, one community had this, another community had your former policy, your policy five years ago, you know, by default, I would choose the other policy. I can tell you, this reminds me of, a friend of mine has a, had an Anytime Fitness location in Carmel, Indiana. He opened about the same time we opened our Shelbyville Club. He's subsequently gone out of business. I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of factors there, but you can't discount the sign factor. It was very limited there. So now we're on our second round of franchising in Carmel that just opened up. I wish that guy the best of luck, but again, it's much more restrictive, and these are real practical matters for small business people.
One of the things we looked at was the Shelbyville ordinance, since you bring that up.
Listen, that's a good point.
And I think ours is less restrictive than Shelbyville.
Yes, that's a good point. I'm glad that you brought that up. It's one point that I almost didn't mention here. I can compare my current locations based on the kind of signage that we have, and if I compare our Seymour location to our Shelbyville location, we're able to do lots of things with our signage in Seymour, Indiana. We're able to do very little in Shelbyville, and I can tell you that we do about forty percent more business in Seymour, and it has everything to do with that signage. I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you. Next person, John.
Okay, thank you. I'm John Dooley. I know most of you here. I've been in business here for just less than thirty years here in Greensburg. I have a business on Lincoln Street, and in opposing this, I promise to be kind to you all. I sit on the local airport board, so I'm kind of accustomed to feeling some questions from the audience. In opposing this, although this ordinance is certainly well-intended, it certainly is business-unfriendly. These signs, as you've heard here from everybody else, are exceedingly important to the businesses that they service. These are excessive restrictions on the size and the height of these signs. You know, every sign, almost every sign now down Main Street and down Lincoln Street, if, that are existing there now, if they were trying to be a new business, new sign, they'd be prohibited. They'd be too big or placed in their own place. Interestingly, as an aside, these restrictions, right in your code here, they don't apply to political signs, because they say it's a First Amendment right for politics, but that's being applied to politicians and not business people. That's not really important here. Certainly, as I gather here, you're trying to create something aesthetically beautiful, such as they have in Zionsville and in Carmel, Naples, Florida, very beautiful places like that. Here, I think that's impractical to take this grandfather in existing businesses, and as new businesses come in, keep their signs small. It's certainly going to be very difficult to have a new business come in, have small signs competing with other businesses with large signs. That's going to be very impractical. Should we have restrictions on signs? What we do now, certainly we should. I mean, you know, we don't need anything obscene on signs. We don't need strobe lights on signs, anything obstructing. We certainly do need restrictions. These are just excessively restrictive. They're business-unfriendly. It's not going to attract new business. Yes, you can get a variance, sure you can get a variance. Variances are time-consuming, and they're expensive. If you're going to give variances to businesses coming in, then your project's not going to work out as planned anyway, so I just oppose this measure. Thanks for your time.
Thanks. I want to get something clear here. There's no size limitation from the old ordinance to the new ordinance, except for height.
Well, height is critical, though. The height of these signs is critical.
But you're all saying, everyone's walked up there and said, "We can't make them as big. You can't make them as tall. You can make them the same size, first off." And this is only a guideline. Nobody's passed anything yet. I want you to understand.
Okay.
It hasn't changed yet. As of now, nothing's changed, but everybody keeps saying it can't be as big. It can be as big.
Well, the size restrictions are, what, six feet tall?
Eight.
Eight feet tall? It's not very tall. And if you go down Lincoln Street and see how many signs existing now, and yes, you can grandfather those in, that pacifies your current business owners. As a new business owner coming in, how are you going to track those? Your sign has to be eight feet tall.
As a citizen of Greensburg, how do you think it looks? Don't talk about whether you're trying to find business or not. For a second, just answer me. Do you think that's aesthetically pleasing, what we have on north?
I think it looks like a very typical Midwestern business quarter is what it looks like. No, it doesn't look like Naples, Florida, and it doesn't look like Zionsville. So we're not Naples, and we're not Zionsville.
No, we're not.
And I haven't heard, has anybody here feeled any complaints from the citizens here about the signs on Lincoln Street or Main Street? I haven't heard any. I don't know if you have or not. And I just oppose this measure. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else in the audience?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce David from Cincinnati. We've spent two years...
Sean, if you could just come up and make a record.
Sure. Spent two years, actually brought this up to Kathy two years ago, because we've been doing, you know, we do ten, fifteen percent of our business in Greensburg, a little more lately with the tornado. Thank God nobody got hurt, but appreciate the local business. Nice to work close to home. But over two years ago, brought to Kathy's attention, I'm like, "You guys need to get up with the times here. This ordinance sucks. It's old. It needs a little more tweak. We could help out. We do stuff all over the U.S. I don't need my time. We have a priment lady. We bring her in. We have fax, dah, 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 dah." Basically, for two years, I've been feeling used and abused, and the only thing that Kathy's taken away, and now Gary Murray's taken from the meetings, is definitions and more restrictions that they're pulling out of this stuff. So I'm so glad, because I've done this in a lot of cities, and we usually get a lot of business people show up, and I'm so glad this evening to see local business people show up, so you don't only hear it from me and think I'm biased. I'm proud of Greensburg, you know, it's not just because it's my business, but I know that it's going to hurt the city financially doing this. So on top of that, we've spent numerous time and effort and money, and we've brought in an expert, maybe you'll listen to him, too. David, you want to come on up?
Sure. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Williamson. I came in from Cincinnati this evening. I don't know any of you except Sean, so I hope you do view me as an outsider and with a little objectivity. I have thirty years of experience in the sign industry, including the last five years as an attorney with a private practice in Ohio focused on sign law. So I speak today really having Sean ask me to come in and maybe put one more layer of research and grounding on the sign code that you're looking at. So I will be brief, but there's a couple of things that I'd like to address, and I think I want to do this maybe by looking at your code, your current code, and your proposed code in two areas. I look at codes all the time. In Ohio, as an attorney, and across the country, as a consultant. I want to look at two areas, because I think it'll show you where you could do better and where we could achieve you doing better. Freestanding signs. Your current code, Section 155, says that no ground sign shall be over six feet in height, and that the sign face area is one and a half times millennial footage of the building. You want to change that to, if I understand the code correctly, business and industrial freestanding buildings, you have increased your height to eight feet, because the language says not to exceed eight feet in height. But then, your sign, and this is in your proposal, your proposed new code, the sign shall not exceed thirty-two squared feet.
Oh, that's...
Has that been removed?
Yes, that's a hundred squared. Everything at size is what he's getting at, all the sizes that were in the current are staying as the proposed.
Okay. What I have as the, has the sign code, the proposed sign code been marked up a number of times?
Yes.
And has it, is it online?
No, not yet, because it hasn't been approved by here yet. It's only a draft.
Okay.
It's rough stages. It's only a draft, and it's before this... And it's before this tour to get any questions and concerns. So we can make a final copy.
All right, then. Okay, so just for my notes then, that sign shall not exceed one hundred squared feet? Is that the new, your new, what you want to propose to council? One hundred squared? Okay, that's great. Thirty-two squared feet, obviously, is punitive. I handed out a number of things that looked like algebra. And Sean has been talking with you over the last couple of years about the fact that driving distance and driving speeds all have a, and what a driver does in reaction to knowing that he needs to stop somewhere in a business, all has to do with the sign face area and the height of the sign. And what we've actually found out is that in, it's backwards. To be in a safe driving environment, which has got to be the chief thing that you were thinking about as a planning commission, the sign face areas need to be larger and the heights higher. Now, don't take my word for it. I would be happy if you were still in a drafting stage to come and talk to your committee, to your work, your working group, and we'll work through this algebra. But the planning profession, not me, the planning profession has endorsed those traffic safety guidelines for larger sign faces and higher signs in their own publication called Street Graphics. And there's a, what I've left for you, just some table of contents to kind of let you know that there's a lot of research that we could bring to make sure that you're not just bringing a sign code in that's business friendly, but that promotes traffic safety. Now, I want to go to one more spot, and I hope that maybe you've made some draft changes here too. Your sign, your sign face area allowances and your height allowances, as you propose them, obviously, as the members of the audience said, mostly affect new businesses. Your language about non-conforming signs, however, leads me to question that, and I would think that you've got a couple of holes that you could be falling in that we could solve. Right now, in your section 155, on non-conforming signs, you've got some great language. I look at codes all the time and I look at what you have expressed there. It's great language, but you've changed it, at least in the draft that I saw or that's been online. You now say, under your definitions, sign, legally non-conforming. It ends up, any changes to the existing sign would be considered a new sign. Now, that's language that then trips up the property rights of all these business owners out there. If they would change their sign by your own language, then they come under the new code. And that's really not what they're intending to do. So I really wish that you could work on that. It looks like you're trying to grapple with sign face changes, which I believe I heard one of the commission members talk about. But I don't understand why you are insisting about any change of construction materials or any change of mode of conveying message. I've never seen this language in codes before. What you're saying is that a sign that was made in 1978 has to be of the same materials in 2012? It's almost impossible. For instance, a cabinet sign today that has fluorescent lamps in it, the state of the industry, the state of the technology in the sign industry is that that's going to be replaced with a sheet of LED lights. That's a change of construction materials. It's energy efficient, it's much less intense, and it's much cheaper for the business owner. But you're saying that you can't do that or that you'll lose your non-conforming status. You have something called face in, excuse me, face out, face in change, that you're saying the sign will lose its protection as a non-conforming sign if the sign area is decreased. And you use the decreased a number of times, and I've never seen it before. Many cities would love to see a sign area is decreased, but you've got other cities around you that I don't know have been reviewed or not, but there's good language that exists. And I think I would offer to come and help you get to that point because you've got a city that could compete with other like cities in Indiana. But it takes specific language and an understanding of what the planning profession has embraced to promote traffic safety, which is adequate sign face areas and adequate height for signs. And then to protect your businesses, language to really be clear, really clear, on what constitutes non-conforming height. I offer additional time with your staff or with your working committee, but I appreciate the chance to talk tonight.
On the change of materials, the idea there was that, and maybe it didn't come across in the language, but the idea was that if you bought a, let's just say you bought a building and there was a sign out front and it was Roy's place, and you didn't want to be Roy's place, you wanted to be Kevin's place. Kevin could change the sign face and it would not be a new sign. But if he did anything, if it was not lighted now and he made it lighted, that would be a new sign. If it was ten foot tall now and he wanted to go to fourteen foot tall, that would be a new sign. But if he just, if it was lighted now and he wanted to change, you know, they would just put new covers on it, it'd still be lighted, that would not be a new sign. That was our intent. So that, and the idea behind that was so that you could use, a sign post could be actually an advantage to you to buy a certain property.
Absolutely. That's what you want.
And that's what we were trying to protect, was the value for that person to his property. Okay? That sign that's there now, even though that business is gone, that existing signage has value when he goes to sell.
I hear you.
And I didn't want to, I was on the committee, okay?
Yes, sir.
The idea was not to impede that. We wanted to protect that, but also not have them think they could come in and create a brand-new, multiple strobing, flashing sign and it would be non-conforming legal because the sign had existed. That was what we were trying to achieve. Maybe our language has not achieved that. I thought it had, but again, I'm not an expert.
I think we could get there. I'm allergic to the emphasis on trying to predict construction materials into the future. The industry's changing so fast and it's getting so much better every year.
Yeah, you know, I agree.
That you want to be a city that is known for embracing, you know, being on the edge, being a green city, a Greensburg city. And you could do that. But you've got language that you could trip up business.
And that was never, the intent of the committee was never to be un-business friendly, if you will. I mean, we didn't want to be anti, I think somehow it came across here that we were wanting to be anti-business, and that was never the intent. We just wanted to control it. And as Sean has said, our language was lousy. In the existing ordinance, the language, the definitions weren't there. So we started out with this process trying to improve that.
We always have to be careful what we ask for, you know. You're getting close, and if your intent is good, I think we could help you get to the finish line. But in, that's pro-business, but doesn't do anything that detracts from the city. I mean, that's the key. But there's a huge difference between thirty-two squared feet allowance and a hundred squared feet.
Well, yeah, I agree. That's why I kept trying to tell you. So we didn't change the size. We changed how high you can make it. And since we've, I'm going to talk about that for a minute. I have done some online research and I do see that you are right about the height of signs. They are the highway, I forget what the place I went to, something Sean provided me with the website, National Highway.
I gave you so much stuff.
I don't remember which one it was right now, Sean. But anyway, they were expressing what you said about taller signs. And that's why we're having input tonight is to try and find out.
On your handout that is marked sign code comparisons, freestanding signs, the second page there is from a model sign code that the American Planning Association, it's just this month, October 2011, put out to its members in a publication called Sign Regulations as appropriate resource to look at. And as you'll look at, A being area and H being height, I mean, all of these heights that conform then back to fourteen years' worth of traffic safety done by Transportation Institute at Pennsylvania State University, all of these numbers are larger than what you're looking with. That doesn't mean that you have to be at these numbers, but you've got to take into account what accounts for reasonably effective motors safety. So again, there's a ton of resources. Again, it's not me. It's what the APA, the planning profession, has gotten its arms around for years of studying and working with the industry, that you could come out of this and have the best code in Indiana. You could. That doesn't mean that you have it in draft form yet, but you could be there. And that would be a great signal to your economic development efforts that you're open for business.
So you would be willing to come? What is it going to cost us if we ask you to come? Our limited source of funding is that?
Don't look at me. I thought zero was going to be the answer. I don't want to be on the record for that, but I would be willing to take a look at coming and maybe a workshop, and we talk through a couple of hours and some guidance on some of the, you're getting there, just to get you moved forward. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Mr. Player?
I would like to know. I have a question.
You don't get out of one, always.
I work, play from play hardware debt in Greensburg. I have a fence on my property and I have a lot of signs on it. And I saw a lot of fat. When a sign blows down, I can tell. I mean, every day I get people walking, "Oh, I see your sign on the fence. See your sign on the fence." Is that a fence sign? I know Sean doesn't like it. He says I've got too much out there with the books for me. You know, I spend forty-eight thousand of your advertising on everything else and that's pretty free out there, but it probably makes me more money than anything.
I don't know right now if it meets the current code or not. Some of the things out there may not meet even the current standard, let alone the new one.
It doesn't.
So, you know, in a long, your technical, your non-compliance now, I mean, we haven't done anything about it. So far, we're looking at those things being done in the future.
Well, just like the Anytime Fitness guy said, you know, I mean, signs make a big deal. And like I said, that fence right there, it makes, I get a lot of customers every day and they tell me, "I'm just driving by. What do you think? I see you have Temple Pete. All right, yeah." You know, and that's, and I spend a lot of money advertising, you know. I'm on TV every day. I'm on cable. I'm at the movie theater. I do flyers every month. I'm in the paper every night. I'm on a radio station. I promote a lot. But the one thing that I really like is the thing, it costs me nothing. It sits out there. I know I get business solved. There's no two ways to pass it. So hopefully, I'll dress it up and hopefully I can keep it.
Oh, now that hides it. Thanks, Eric. And I know signs work. My comments are, I can't imagine driving around with two things. I'll just, a dentist over there, but maybe it happens.
We'll call you the next Saturday night they call.
The average town is twenty percent of its population moving in and out every year. So a new sign does one. Missed out on twenty percent without a sign.
Any other comments from the audience? Any comments from the board?
Yes. One more comment. And I'm not going to slander all this facts about the city of the bigger signs than everybody else or what they're proposing or anything like that, but can we get some commitment out of you guys tonight that we're really going to straighten this out? Again, it's been two years going on. And if we could work together, you know, I'll still hold some hard feelings towards a few people and I'll hold some towards me, but none of that matters. What matters is getting a good ordinance that's good for the business people, that pay all the taxes, hire people and help the whole community grow and do better. I think the personal feelings of a little fancy sign versus a big one, none of that matters. That's personal feelings. If we could get some commitment out of the board that will go by the facts, get some experts in and move on with this. We have a lot better things to do in this town than talk about an ordinance that should be set in stone and that should have been done a long time ago. Thank you.
Well, and along those lines, Sean, and at the end of last meeting, I asked if you had any problems with specifics in the sign ordinance, could please let someone on this board know?
Yes.
I never received anything from you until I saw you tonight. Did anyone else receive anything?
I think you received it from the audience, didn't you?
Well, that really doesn't help to be slamming the ordinance saying that this stinks. I mean, to work together on it, we need specifics. This is good. Yours was your old ordinance. This is the new one. This is the problem I have with it.
Yes.
And we can work like that.
Yes, I have it all marked up. I went over it with Kathy and Ron and Gary, and they can pass that info on, but if you want me to pass it on to you, I have no problem doing that at all.
You never provided your markup.
You never provided your markup to us, like you said.
I have no problem.
I had to ask Kathy, "Did you get anything from Sean today, yesterday or today?" And she said, "No." So what are we supposed to do?
Send it to you tomorrow? You going to listen to it?
One of my concerns when I look at this, you know, I look at the signatures from the business owners here in Greensburg that are opposed to making the changes that we proposed and add. And I really feel like that we need, before we do anything final, we need to have some of those business owners address that with the new ordinance and work together to come up with an ordinance that everybody can live with because there's an awful lot of our business owners' names on the sheet here.
Over a hundred.
And I'm even considering restarting that committee.
I think we need to take a, we need to relook at that.
Because, I mean, it was never our intent to do any governmental business or to pass some ordinance, you know, sign ordinance. But we did want to work together with something that everyone felt comfortable with. And, I mean, you've had more input than anyone else in the sign ordinance that I know of, Sean. But like I said, I mean, to move forward at this point, I think we need to get some specifics.
Tom, excellent idea. And I would suggest, and probably the other business people, is getting some business people on that board would be very beneficial. I don't, you know, to even this up a little bit. Sarah asked a great question at the beginning, you know, how many business people are helping create this? Zero right now.
And I would certainly think that would make sense to have this input. And, I mean, I was under the impression we'd worked all along with this to get this done.
No. And I requested last meeting too, and you said it's too late, but I'll take your word.
But the reason we're here now and we didn't pass it last time is because I said, "Well, why don't you address the specifics?"
Okay.
Which you never did.
I'm here, whatever you want.
And obviously, there's concerns with this. And I mean, I can't speak to the board, but obviously with the concerns, I think it's prudent to maybe revisit our committee and maybe include some business people on that. I'm completely open to that.
Great.
But it not only does any good just to be, you know, slamming the ordinance globally. So at the So, at this point, any other comments from the board members? What do you guys think of taking us back to the original project?
I think take, I think we take what his suggestions are, and, you know, Sean is biased, there's no doubt.
And I've said, if I'm Sean, I knew exactly what he's doing.
Take his, take his changes that he proposes to the ordinance, take it back to committee that we had originally with business people from Greensburg, come up with something everyone can live with, because we can't, I can't pass an ordinance where the majority of the business people in our community are against it. And that's not, I don't think that's what we're all about either, but we do need to come up with a consistent ordinance that everybody can live with, and that new business is coming in, it's friendly, but yet it's not, they can do whatever they want, so we can, we can, we can make, we're probably 75% through it right now.
No, I think, I think there's very small changes that need to be made, honestly. Mayor?
With 100% concern for those soliciting, or those concerned business people that have called in and said, "Hey, I'm against this."
I pay them off.
I'm just kidding. And that's another thing. I think what the threat that Mr. Green has given this last month after the meeting, that we'll get hold of his attorney, thank you, Sean, that's quite an improvement over last month of the assaults and innuendos. So, we appreciate your attorney coming. And I would suggest that the attorney is the one that attends the committee meetings, and I think we'd get a lot more done, without too many cooks in the kitchen.
Glad, yeah. Good deal.
And I have something else too. I don't remember the enormous size of your sign. Was it relatively short, Sarah?
Oh, the old sign?
Yeah.
Yes, it probably was not six foot tall. And when, we have two people that have those, what do you call them, escalade and envoy, and they could obtrude the whole sign. So, you know, even with our temporary signage, depending on whether it's upright or not, we've even had people comment, you know, "Are you closed? Are you moving?"